Tawney Town Planning Commission, please come to order. Would you please stand for the pledge of the flag?
I, United States of America, am in the name of this nation, and of God, indivisible.
The records reflect the members of the commission that are present. I hope we're all here this evening. The commission members should receive the draft minutes of September 29th, 2025. Any corrections or additions to those minutes?
Make a motion, we accept the minutes.
Varys, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O'Jeney. Carrie. With the approval of the commission here, I'd like to change the agenda tonight. I'd like to move the Evapco up to be the first one on the, on the agenda for the night and the rest in order.
I suppose I'm good.
Carrie, thank you. First thing on the agenda tonight for delegation would be Evapco, concept plan approval for off-site parking lot. Drew, you want to start us off, and then a representative from Evapco?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Just really quick to go over some of the main highlights from the report, the staff report that was given to you last week. Evapco appeared before the Board of Zoning Appeals of the City of Tawney Town on October 22nd, last week. The board took all evidence and testimony into consideration and voted to approve the special exception request. Please note pursuant to City Code Section 181-10A, where there is no subdivision of land, the commission may waive the preliminary site plan requirements and move directly from concept site plan approval to final site plan consideration. If the commission waived the preliminary site plan review and moved to final site plan consideration, the site plan would still be bound by all requirements contained in preliminary and final site plan section. The commission may wish to discuss this. Also, the commission may wish to have the applicant mention if they are expecting an increase in vehicular traffic with this new 153-space parking facility, and what any increase in traffic will do to Allendale Lane at the intersection of Allendale Lane and Francis Scott Key Highway, Maryland 194. The commission shall also consideration whether the proposed use conforms to the Tawney, the City of Tawney Town Comprehensive Plan. The commission may wish to decide whether a sidewalk requirement along Francis Scott Key Highway, Maryland 194, is necessary since no sidewalk is located within 1,100 plus minus feet from the property along the east side of Maryland 194. Also, the commission may also wish to discuss any internal pedestrian access from the proposed parking lot to the existing parking lot. And lastly, the designer and engineer should provide more information on whether the proposed use violates the provisions of any enforceable deed restrictions or covenants attached to the property. That is all I have for you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Drew. Commission, a comment from Evapco.
Last month's meeting, you guys had a question about the ADA spaces, and I have plans now to address that. May I come up and?
Thanks, ma'am.
And you were moving them from the existing parking, from the new parking lot next to the building, new building?
We're dedicating spots next to the parking lot. There are, if you look at the bottom line. There are 514 existing spaces. There are 182 proposed spaces, so a total of 696. Two percent required for ADA, that's 14 spaces. There are 12 existing, so we're proposing to add two, dedicate two new spaces to make a total of 14 to meet the requirement.
Again, the, the new ADA ones are moving up next to the new construction side, right?
Yes, Alcara says two, to, on the old lot, two proposed accessible spaces. And then there's a, that blow up right there is the blow up right here.
Guys find them, okay?
I see the, I guess there's a sidewalk on the lower, next between the two parking lots there. But you're expecting everyone to kind of walk across the exist, where the, where the other parking?
Correct, we have a sidewalk that's going to connect to the sidewalk for the adjacent parcel. And then they'll cross at the provided pedestrian crossing that they provided the last lot.
Yep. Yep, thanks, sir.
Any comments?
I don't have any comment. I guess we're too far down the road to ask for a sidewalk, but can we get the right of way?
You talking about next to 194, the state highway?
The only issue that we may encounter with a right of way for sidewalk is that the boundary line or right of way line for this parcel does not align with the previous site plan. Yeah, you can't really tell on here, but they did allow for an easement for a sidewalk in front of, between the parking and, and 194 on the previous site plan. On this, if we were to do that, we're going to have to slide it, I guess, back away from the road some in order to address that. Otherwise, you'll be in the actual state right of way if it were to align with the neighbor.
Space to do that. Here's a.
My concern is that pedestrians from the lot will then try to go towards 194 and then walk up and then not be at the safest spot to cross Allendale.
Another issue would be the amount of landscape training that we've got to supply or, or meet along that, in between the parking spaces and the highway there. That's basically just all going to be landscape and territory.
Does that mean we'll never have a sidewalk there?
I don't know, could we do the other side of the road? I mean, we're trying to make a walkable town.
Well, typically, the sidewalks are within the right of way of the road. That would be something we'd have for us against the state highway. If you're going to be able to put a sidewalk in.
Always wanted sidewalks, everywhere we've done things.
What do we want to do? We want to get an easement there for future, or do we want to require it now?
If one was not required for the previous parking lot, perhaps not. But we typically do try to at least get an easement where we think a future sidewalk could go. We did that with the adjacent property, I believe.
That's probably the most prudent way forward.
It was pointed.
That route, do we agree on that route?
It was pointed out previously that constructing sidewalk leading up to the stream crossing where there's no pedestrian walkway across the bridge could be considered a safety issue. So I think that fed into the commission's decision not to require sidewalks on, on a, I believe it was Duffy Box was a recent one. I don't recall the conversation with the previous Evapco lot so much, though.
But we have a, we have a, didn't, don't we have an easement for the first?
I believe we've always gotten an easement, yeah.
There is an easement.
I'd like to add that, an easement. Comments from the floor? Reference to Evapco's parking lot? Excuse me.
So are we?
Before we ask that, have we heard any comments back from the county or any of the agents yet?
We have a couple, from what I know of. Comprehensive Planning just sent their comments in actually this, after, well, this evening. And I have, actually, no, wait, sorry, I'm getting that confused. Have, I believe, heard some comments back, but let me see. But without all the comments back, we don't really want to go to final without that.
We can accept the concept plan. And then when they come before us, we can make a decision then if we want to do the final along with the.
Yeah, the county has a grading-only site plan process where it's just one phase. And we, that will be, that's why we're trying to request the preliminary plan waiver. So it's kind of echoes the county's process.
Time we do the preliminary, we can possibly do the final. If, if all comments are back from the county and the other agents.
Concept plan with a request for sidewalk easement.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve the Evapco concept plan with a request for consideration to the sidewalk easement.
Comments from the floor? Give her that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carrie, thank you. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, we'll move into concept site plan approval for 520 East Bommer Street, McDonald's. Andrew, if you want to lead us off again, then we'll move to representatives.
Yes, sir.
Just give me a second. Okay.
Just to mention, access to the site is proposed by the private access road as Gen Eve Drive. The proposed use is permitted under the existing zoning ordinance pursuant to 205-20B-3. Also, regarding lot and yard requirements, the staff would just like the applicant to confirm lot coverage and also maximum building height to make sure that complies with the zoning ordinance. After review, city staff does not see Gen Eve Drive as a street due to it being a private street. The commission may wish to discuss this. If the commission decides this private street is a street, then the setback line will need to be amended on the site plan. Water usage, water usage has yet to be provided on the site plan. The owner and developer will be required to provide use, usage data from other similar restaurants to review. Staff would like the commission to discuss having the front of the building fronting along East Baltimore Street if the commission believes that such a more stringent design provision is necessary to promote the public health, safety, and welfare, or to promote good site plan design pursuant to Section 181-9C. Additionally, pursuant to 181-20G1, the main entrance to the building should be oriented to the street unless the parking layout or the grouping of the buildings justify another approach and should be clearly identified as such through building and site design landscaping and/or signage. Staff would like the commission to discuss having the elevation of the building changed to include a more architecturally pleasing facade to what can be found in Cambridge, Maryland and Frederick, Maryland if the commission believes that such a more stringent design, design provision is necessary to promote the public health, safety, and welfare, or to promote good site plan design pursuant to 181-9C of the City Code. In the staff report I provided, and also the applicant received the staff report last week, two locations, one is in Cambridge and the other is in Frederick. And just for staff mentioning, the commission may wish to review the color rendering submitted to the Board of Zoning Appeals depicting what the Tawney Town McDonald's will look like, which is below that sentence in the report. McDonald's appeared before the Board of Zoning Appeals of the City of Tawney Town on October 22nd. The board took all evidence into consideration and voted to approve the parking and sign variance requests. Also pursuant to 181-10A, where there is no subdivision of land, the commission may waive the preliminary site plan requirements and move directly from concept site plan approval to final site plan consideration. And as mentioned before, if the commission decides to waive the preliminary site plan review and move to final site plan review, this site plan would still be bound by all requirements complaint, contained in both the preliminary and final site plan sections. And the commission may wish to discuss that. The traffic group concluded that since the restaurant is decreasing in size, there will be a reduction of trips for this McDonald's. During your September 29th, 2025 meeting, a commission member commented about how reducing the size of the restaurant may increase the number of trips going through the drive-through. The applicant should provide more clarity on this comment for commission consideration. After review of the 2010 Tawney Town Comprehensive Plan, staff would like to recommend existing sidewalk along East Baltimore Street connect to the existing restaurant for pedestrian access pursuant to the master plan goals contained in the staff report. And lastly, the designer and engineer should provide more information on whether the proposed use violates the provisions of any enforceable deed restrictions or covenants attached to the property. That is all I have, Mr. Chair, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you.
I have a statement. I'd like to see their decision set aside because I think they were denied some information at the hearing. I know they asked how many employees and the answer was, nobody knew. I made four trips out there this week. Three of them, it was nine employees, and the last one, it's 11. You must take that away from your number so they don't have 19 like they say they do. They don't have many parking spaces, and I have an issue with that.
Would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, we do not have a representative from McDonald's here this evening, nor the traffic engineer. So I cannot speak officially as a traffic engineer. One part of the testimony from the McDonald's representatives at the hearing last week was that not all of the employees drive to work.
That doesn't matter, ma'am. You still, next week, they might, the new employees, all might drive. You have to consider that number. Doesn't matter if they parachute in, you must consider a place for each one of them.
So I also, I know that this traffic testimony is, the traffic study is not part of the testimony tonight, but I wanted to just provide a little more information about how the traffic counts were conducted, which is what the traffic engineer presented at the hearing, is that they did drone surveillance for three days straight to count the number of spaces that were used. And then they found that the peak number of spaces ever used, correct, 15, 15. So that was, three days straight, took into account however many employees were there on lower shifts, on busier shifts, you know, customers all throughout the day. And that study was part of what we presented last week to get approved for the parking variance. So again, I, I hear you that you.
Your helper's behind you.
So I, I hear, and I think that the number of employees and the number of employees on peak shift is some information that we, we can definitely get from McDonald's and respond. And we can also find out if that's something that's going to change from the size of the building now to the new building. But I don't have that information for you tonight.
Overall, we are concerned about the parking spaces.
Yeah, because I believe what's happening right now is the employees that Drew do drive are parking in the other lot.
That's, that's mine.
So they're not going to get picked up on a McDonald's lot survey. They're going to get, they're going to be parking across the street.
For the record, Adam Baker, I'm Land Use Counsel for McDonald's. I'm with Rosenberg Martin Greenberg, and I was at the, the hearing last week. There was testimony through representatives from McDonald's as well as from the traffic group with regard to the parking. McDonald's has a policy that its employees who drive to work park in the lot. That's always been their policy here. Whether in the real world that happens, they try to police it the best they can, but that's their policy. The traffic group conducted parking studies over three days, as, as Ms. Thompson just said. And again, those studies and the data that was included in those studies assumes that the cars on site include both customers and employees of McDonald's, however many there might have been there on that particular day.
What was that word you used, assumed, okay?
Yeah, because that's, because I'm, with about 90% certainty, know that that's not what's actually going on at the moment. So.
And, and I'm just telling you what, what the policy was and how they, you know, again.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I understand what they were, what they were doing. And I'm not like jumping on you guys in, in particular, but, um, I'm just saying that there, last, last meeting, there was, um, there was an assumption of overflow into the, into the, the shopping center parking lot. Like I said, 90% certainty that I can sit up here and tell you on the record that employees are parking over in the parking, in that parking lot now. Has there been any communication with the shopping center about, about using their, their space?
And, and I can answer that because I talked to my client about it before the hearing, and I think they testified to it. There's no formal agreement between McDonald's and the shopping center owner, and the McDonald's employees are not supposed to be using that parking. So if that's happening and the shopping center owner knows about it, you know, I can, I can encourage my client to reach out to them to open that dialogue, but that there's no agreement in place to allow for that.
Well, but what, one of the, one of the stipulations from McDonald's last time was that they were going to be, they were accepting that they were going to be using that lot as overflow or, or what have you, and that's why they were able to get the lower parking lot, parking space numbers. So that was one of the things we were asking for last time was to make sure that there's actually some, something more than a, yeah, we're, we're parked, we're not.
Yeah, and, and again, I, I will tell you, based upon my conversations with my client as well as the traffic engineer who was present last time, there's no agreement in place. Their employees should not be parking there. Again, if they are, the hope is that the shopping center owner communicates with McDonald's. And if those conversations aren't happening, I'll encourage my client to reach out. But the studies that were conducted and the data that my client has collected and, and just their, their experience through operating the McDonald's is that there is adequate parking on site, or strike that, there will be adequate parking on site with the proposed redevelopment to account for customer parking as well as employee parking. The, the numbers that we showed to the zoning board last week, or the testimony, I should say, indicates that McDonald's is seeing and has seen for the last 10 years or so, a, a steady increase in the number of customers who are utilizing the drive-through. I think last year, they said at this particular site, 70% of its customers coming to the site and ordering food were using the drive-through. And that's a number that, that again, has risen in the last couple of years, particularly in the wake of COVID. Their customer dining habits have changed such that more people are using the drive-through as opposed to parking their vehicles and sitting down and dining in. And again, that's, that's part of the reason why the redevelopment is designed the way that it is, why it's a dual-lane drive-through to accommodate the increase in, in customers who are utilizing the drive-through. The parking study and the, the trip analysis that were introduced, I think, I believe you guys have, have seen those documents that were introduced, again, demonstrate that at its peak, over the course of the three days that the parking was studied, 15 parking spaces were utilized at its peak.
My other issue I have, you changed your drawing when you went to the special appeals because you removed all these signs on this side.
That's correct.
Now, what guarantee do we have the day after you open, you're not going to put them back? I mean, it's funny how you changed your drawing after you got done with us, and I was a concern.
Well, well, to, to be honest, it was in response to the feedback that we received. If, if, if I'm a customer coming to McDonald's and I see 10 spots that are allocated to mobile orders, even if it's McDonald's practice to allow anybody to park, their eyes, a customer, don't know that. And so in order to open those spots up for anyone to park, well, I shouldn't say anybody, its customers to park, McDonald's made the decision to remove those signs. They did keep the two overflow drive-through signs, and those are, those are primarily if somebody's order is taking too long, they can pull into a spot, it allows the queue to get through the drive-through, and then their order is brought out to their vehicle. But, but yeah, it was in direct response to the comments you raised.
What was the seating capacity for the new?
I'm sorry?
Seating capacity.
44 to 50 seats currently, or for the new one, for the new proposed building. And currently, there, there's over 100, maybe 105.
Okay, so the new plan does not have all of the mobile order signs on the right?
Correct, they were, they were all removed.
Okay, because I was about to say, yeah, otherwise you had, you had nine spaces.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, this is old.
So, okay. Um, I still, mostly because they, they, they brought it up last time of it being an assumption, I'd still like to see something a little more formalized with the, with the shopping center of that, that that's going to be the overflow.
And, and I can tell you, based on the conversation I had with my client prior to last week's zoning board hearing, they, they do not intend to enter into an agreement. There's going to be no, the, the presumption, and I guess the, the, their position is that they, their employees and their customers are not to use that drive, strike that, not to use the parking in the shopping center. No, if, if you want documentation from my client reaching out to say, this shouldn't happen. If it happens, please let us know, we're happy to do that.
The employees, but the customers can park wherever they want. I can park in my house in Walkair.
But no, the, but the, um, the, the, I'm just, only reason I'm going over it is because they actually, they, that was one of the reasons that they were saying for the parking variance that they were going to go before the zoning board of appeals.
And, and again, I, I'm sorry, I wasn't at the planning commission meeting last month. I will say at the zoning hearing, they were crystal clear that their employees are not, are not to use the shopping center parking lot. So again, if you want documentation from my client reaching out to, again, police it.
I don't think that's the issue.
Okay, and McDonald's.
The issue is the 19 parking spots.
Correct.
I think everything you said, I believe. 15 cars, I got it, I believe it. My concern is that, what if, what if one of the workers there buys a car? Now they're going to take another parking spot, you know, so.
Right.
And I don't know how many workers there are at a time, but it's more than six.
Well, we all know, as everybody at this commission, what happens up there. You know, if, if we have nine employees, like Barry said, that have cars, the potential's there. Guess where they're parking? Park over, and I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Parking across, and the luxury that we have in this dynamic is that we have that big parking lot right next to it, and there's no agreement. We understand that. I've lived there most of the time that McDonald's is, and we all. I've lived there most of the time that McDonald's is, and we've all seen it.
I think, if I may, I think McDonald's, based upon the experts that they hired to study the traffic, combined with what they're seeing in their industry of more folks using the drive-through, if I can be blunt, I think it's a business risk that they're willing to take. If they're seeing seven out of 10 customers use the drive-through versus parking, if their parking lot's full, they are, again, they assume that their customer's going to leave, they're not going to park and go in there, or they're going to get in the drive-through queue. But based upon the analysis that they've done and the experts they've hired, they're comfortable that there will be adequate parking on site to meet the demands. And again, you know, they have limited power to police where their customers park. Obviously, they have more control over their employees. But if it makes you comfortable for them to reach out to the shopping center owner to formalize some understanding of policing, again, we're happy to do that.
I think that customers are going to park in the parking lot across the street. I know I've done it myself. I promise you, they will park there. So to me, it seems to me like the most prudent thing to do is to enter that agreement, which would include looking at all the buildings that are there, how many parking spots do you have? Do we have enough to cover all those plus a few more for McDonald's? And having that agreement and having a designated walkway that goes across Genevieve Drive, you know, just so that people, if you just mark the road, most people will follow that, so they'll be walking, instead of all over the road, they will follow the walkway. So I think that would be, I think that would make everybody happy up here.
I think the danger that that raises is the willingness of the shopping center owner to enter into any agreement is completely out of the hands of my client.
That could be.
It is.
It is, it is.
But it's worth the effort.
We may have a procedural issue or question here as well. The Board of Appeals did grant the parking variance, so the relief or the, you know, you may not agree with that, but shy of an appeal, that variance has been granted. That is the number.
I think that was due to lack of information they had.
So if one were to appeal the decision, if there were grounds, you know, some technical reason that the board arrived at the wrong conclusion, or that there was some technical defect in the hearing, those are things that I believe can be appealed. I'm not trying to play attorney or anything, I would have to consult with our special counsel to verify that, but I think that before we go too far down this road, we need to recognize that the number that was granted is the number. You know, that's a separate level of authority from yours.
I agree.
19 or 21? Number granted, 19 or 21?
From?
Parking spots.
I think it was 21 with the two marked for the.
With the two being marked for the drive-through overflow spaces.
Total of 21 then.
Yeah. Including those.
Yeah, as it is on here.
Mr. Chair, at the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, I did bring up the two for 19, but the Board of Zoning Appeals proceeded with the drawing as prepared.
I was going to say, last thing, not on parking. Is there, is there any way to improve either the aesthetics or even just the aesthetics of the facing to Baltimore Street? Just because currently we look at the back end of McDonald's, and that's the main gateway into town.
To answer the orientation of the way that the site is laid out currently, and this was discussed the last week as well, there is constraints, there is the S H A right-of-way, the tentative future one that has been proposed, and we actually looked early on a concept as doing a 180 of the building, but due to the constraints of that and the truck circulation and the circulation of vehicles going around, and then where the parking would end up, it was a better interest for the, basically the site layout to function as a way that it would, the way that it's currently situated now. So we did look at that, but this was the layout that we ended up.
No, and I understand that this is probably the best way for this particular lot to go. I'm just saying, is there any way to make the back end of a McDonald's look better than the back end of a McDonald's that it currently has? Because, I mean, we're looking at, what, coolers and whatever else that's on the back right now, and that, and like I said, that's on the main drag right when you get into town. But dovetailing with that is the going with a McDonald's that actually looks like a McDonald's as opposed to the gray and brown, gray and brown box version. Is there any way to get a more aesthetically appealing one, or?
So upon receiving the staff report, we reached out to the client, we asked McDonald's, and we asked them this exact question, and we did get a response back from them in writing, and the building styles that were shown in the report are outdated, they're some over 10 years old, they're no longer part of the McDonald's style guide, and the one that are shown there are going to be rebuilt in the next year, is the one in particular in Frederick. So ultimately, these are the styles that they're looking at for matching up in the future other sites.
It's a shame. That's what I'll go with.
We like old.
To clarify, the one in Frederick is going to end up looking like the proposed elevations on this one as well.
It's a shame because it kind of feels like a downgrade.
It just looks like a box.
Yeah.
But we're going to be talking about another box here in a minute, so. Because that's where, that's where everybody's going, is the Starbucks aesthetic at the moment.
All right. Did I answer your question for now? Back to the original. Who owns Genevieve?
Genevieve Drive.
Genevieve Drive, who owns that?
Right around the McDonald's, it's privately owned, and then I believe to the west, towards downtown Tawny Town, it is owned by the town. But right in the vicinity of McDonald's, it's privately owned. Mr. Chair.
Privately owned by Conawayo?
It's part of the shopping center, Conawayo.
So since you're already using their right-of-way.
The actual street stops at the stop sign between the, I'll say, the New Kenny's Market as you come up the hill from Grand Drive, at that stop sign before you get to the professional building. That's where it switches, Genevieve Drive ends, and from that point on, it's just part of the shopping center parking lot all the way out to, and it, when it goes beyond the shopping center entrance into Road A by Hyes and Sheets and Lorian, that's a combination of ownership from the adjacent properties there. But the city, the city street stops basically where the old shopping center stopped.
At the top of the hill?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, okay.
So actually, you're using private property to get to your property.
There is an access easement.
That was said before.
That was set when this lot was carved off. I believe that's shown on the concept plan.
That's with Conawayo, so that would be the same people that you're dealing with for additional parking in their parking lot.
The limits of the easement are pretty much the drive aisle and just a drop pass. It doesn't extend into the parking, the shopping center parking lot.
So I was curious, I assume everybody's okay with the position of the building, the facing of the building, it's the way it's been for a while? So, I mean, I don't have any issue with it, I was just expecting to hear comments.
Like I say, I agree, I agree with Harry. It'd be nice to see it from 140, but that really doesn't fit the operation of McDonald's.
I think we all agree that, you know, the aesthetics on East Baltimore Street.
Right, that's the way it is.
But that's how it's been.
I don't think there's any way to make a change, and moving it 20 feet or 30 feet towards East Palmer Street wouldn't make any difference. You still have to use the back of it for your orders.
Right.
Not going to change.
It would be nice to eventually get a renovation.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I guess I heard it at the zoning Board of Appeals, and maybe at our meeting too, but can you explain the number of trips that you're expecting with the change to the new? Is it more? Is it going to be less?
You're correct, you heard at the hearing, our traffic expert, our traffic consultant testified that the trip generation from the I T E manual is driven by square footage, and square footage is reducing, therefore, the number of trips is, will have a reduction as well. However, during the testimony, he said, you know, in his opinion, you know, it's the same use, expected the same kind of activity, so the trips will stay relatively about the same.
Less people going inside.
Less inside, more through driving, yes, sir.
So you think it'll be about the same? It makes more sense to me.
Any comments from the floor? Like to go to McDonald's?
Just, I wanted to just add one thing from the planning commission report. There were two questions that asked the applicant to confirm lot coverage and to confirm building height, so we did get that information, just to share and let you know that we're compliant.
Yeah, so typically, the prototype building is at 18 feet, nine and a half inches, so it's under the 35. And then we did look at the coverage of building, the trash enclosure, the drive-through island, and we're at about a 14 to 15% coverage on the lot, and required is less than 60.
I guess the only other question is, I think on the next plans that we're going to look at tonight, they have a place where you can, it's a marked place for people to walk across through the drive-through line to get to the building. So at McDonald's, I mean, if you're walking there, I mean, you got to walk through a lot of traffic, no matter which way, and there's no designated walkway, I don't think. Was that for the McDonald's plan?
McDonald's plan, yes.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
That was the only spot, I believe.
But that's on, that's on the entrance side.
Entrance, yeah, coming off of Genevieve.
But if, like, if you're walking down the main street.
Coming down 140.
140. Walk through the parking lot.
Can we really dictate where, I mean, that's a tough one.
I just seen in the Taco Bell one, they, from the back lot, they had a designated place where walkers would come across there, right by their signs. Anyway, just a comment for the guys.
Take a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that the decision of the appeals board gets set aside, because in my opinion, I don't think McDonald's came in here clean hands, because they did not tell them how many employees they had, so the appeals board did not know how many parking spots to allow for that. My opinion.
Second to that motion. Second to that motion. Or another motion then. Motion to, actually, I'm looking for a motion for approval.
For the concept plan, right?
Yes, as presented to us.
I think it's a good change between the concept plan and the final.
That's, that's open, right, Jim? I mean, this is a concept.
The preliminary and final should always be rooted in the concept, so as long as they, you know, have the same basic layout and, you know, and scale and so on, you know, they, changes can occur, but they shouldn't be, you know, it just still look basically like the concept that's before you tonight. Details can always change.
Motion.
I'm trying to change what the appeals board ruled on, but it just seems to be prudent that you talk to the neighbors and line up parking, that you know is going to happen. That's, so, that's my only issue.
If it helps, we can consult with counsel and get a memorandum for the next meeting with regard to the Board of Appeals' decision and what that means for you guys.
I think, yeah.
If nobody's comfortable making a motion this evening, if that would be helpful, I can ask the special counsel to prepare a memo about the Board of Appeals' hearing for you.
I think we are, yeah.
Presenters?
Clarify, yeah.
Back next month. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks.
Concept site plan approval for 529 East Palmer Street, Taco Bell. Andrew, if you would lead us off, and representatives for Taco Bell, please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to briefly go over the staff report, the proposed use is permitted under the existing zoning ordinance pursuant to Section 20520B3. Just like with McDonald's, staff would like the applicant to confirm the lot coverage and maximum building height to make sure they are compliant with 20520D of the city code. After review, city staff does not see Wilson Avenue as a street due to it being a private street. The commission may wish to discuss this notion. If the commission decides this private street is a street, then the setback line will need to be amended on the site plan. Staff also asked that the front setback line along Amicus Street and Break Iron Street be added. Water usage has yet to be provided. On the site plan, the owner developer will be required to provide usage data from other similar stores for staff review. The applicant should clarify the number of seats on the plan. Also, Taco Bell appeared before the Board of Appeals of the City of Tawny Town on October 22nd. The board took all evidence and testimony into consideration and voted to approve the sign variance requests, including 400.55 square feet of total signage, with the final agreement based on calculations from the submitted sign packet. Staff would like the commission to discuss having the elevation of the building change to include a more architecturally pleasing facade to what can be found in Frederick and Gettysburg. If the commission believes that such a more stringent design provision is necessary to promote the public health, safety, and welfare, or to promote good site plan design pursuant to Section 1819C of the city code. On October 1st, 2025, city staff met with a representative from Taco Bell to, and inquired if the front column of the restaurant could have stone, as can be found in Frederick, Maryland, and the sides of the restaurant be brick, as can be found in Gettysburg, Pennsylvania. Currently, the building is proposed to have blatant brick, Downing Black Vellar, and Equitone linear fiber cement panel. The commission may wish to review the color rendering submitted to the Board of Zoning Appeals, depicted, depicting what the Tawny Town Taco Bell will look like. And those photos, renderings are in the report. Also, Dianamic Engineering was hired to conduct a transportation impact study for the proposed Taco Bell restaurant. The commission will be provided the results, or were provided the results. And lastly, the designer and engineer should provide more information on whether the proposed use violates the provisions of any enforceable deed restrictions or covenants attached to the property. Mr. Chair, I have no more comments, and if you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, any comments from the client?
Yes, I wanted to take a moment, thank you guys for coming back. I wanted to take a moment to also highlight a few changes that we've made since the last time we were here. The following.
The, following the last planning commission meeting that we did meet with Andrew and Jim, and we made some improvements to the site following your comments as well as community comments, one of which was, there was a comment during the last planning commission requesting that we add some curb stops to the parking spaces along the frontage of the building to, to minimize the vehicular overhang and ensure ADA accessibility along that sidewalk. So we're, we're showing the seven foot sidewalk width that was previously shown, but now with the addition of some curb stops there. In addition, we have, as shown on the plan, there we go, we are showing the dumpster on Lot Two to be slightly relocated and the Amicus Drive connection to extend all the way to the eastern property line to connect to the future development on the east, which will in the future help with some circulation as well. And then as part of the plan revisions, we've also provided a proposed sidewalk along the entire driveway, along the north side for both lots one and Lot Two, as well as a connection from the inter-lot sidewalks to those. So now, we are providing pedestrian accessibility not only to East Baltimore Street, but as well to Amicus Street. In addition to that, we have received some county comments as well. The Department of Public Works sent us a letter to approve our concept site plan. We received some minor comments from the water resources review and just to add some additional notes to the plan, which we did incorporate with this resubmission. Health Department, just a couple minor comments on adding some notes and certifications for the final plan. And then some standard grading comments to incorporate for the future grading permit as part of this development. And then environmental, their only comment was that the site is exempt from floodplain management. So I wanted to go over that. And then in addition, similar to the McDonald's, we did, we do have the lot coverage for you, so the building only is four point three percent of Lot One, and then total impervious coverage for the Lot One will be fifty point seven, both of which are less than that sixty percent max. And then the maximum building height required is thirty, thirty-five feet, and the proposed Taco Bell building is going to be twenty-three point five-four feet in height to the arch feature that extends over the actual roof of the building. So that's the highest point. And then with this, we do have water and sewer conceptual connections to the public mains, shown on this plan, but I know that will, we dive into that later with the development. And that is, I believe.
Agree then to go with the, the look at the Frederick, the one Frederick? Did I hear you say that?
I, I wish I had the authority. So we did, we did speak to our client, and we did upgrade some of the facade materials. I know one of those was requested to be brick, and we did up, upgrade the bottom facade to be fully brick, and then also the, the paneling on the top half. The coloring, I know, is a point of contention, but there is a-
I was gonna say, he'll just look like the McDonald's across the street, but with different signage.
The other box, right?
The other box, probably next to the third box.
Yeah. Um, we, this is just a standard for the Kitchen X model, as of right now, that there aren't plans to change it, but that we can always discuss further.
Do we have any renderings of the, of the new proposal?
Yes, I can bring those.
In color?
Yes. Okay, so this is the material spec. Here are the colored rendering, so we have the main entry elevation, this is the side that faces the parking lot, and then this is that arch feature that I've measured for the top building height. This is the drive-through side. This will be the front, and then this will be the rear of the building, and here are some just more conceptual renderings for the look of what it will be like. This will be the front side that you'll see along East Baltimore Street. And then here is a look at the conceptual rendering for the drive-through side. And then here are, these are the pictures that Andrew as well included in the staff report, but this is just an example of this exact prototype that was constructed in Toledo, Ohio, and then the same in Canton, Ohio. So you guys can see some real-life pictures of what they end up looking like.
Box.
If you don't mind me asking, so the ones in Frederick and Gettysburg, are they the older style, or is that a-
Yeah, so that's a, it's a completely different building prototype, so it's, it's an older style, yes.
So is that exactly what happened in the, or what was discussed previously? Is that one gonna go away and these renderings at the bottom are gonna, if they ever get updated? I'm just asking.
Yeah, I, it's a valid question. I am not sure, there are different ways that-
You said that, I, I remember from the previous that you said that, you know, and-
Didn't Gettysburg just open last year? That was just built.
The one in Frederick?
The one in Gettysburg, that was just built, wasn't it?
I'm actually, I'm actually not as familiar with that one. Um, yeah, if, if they ever do a remodel, they can, you know, scrape and rebuild to a model like this, or, but, um-
That's what I was getting at, so if they ever did update, and if it's only a year old, that's not gonna happen for a while. So, okay, so there's different designs on, depends on what the population is, or whatever the size of that-
Yeah.
-the building to whatever that town's gonna take, right?
I saw one open about six months ago that's this.
Okay, okay.
In your opinion?
Okay, thank you.
I've already given my opinion on the plain boxes, I think we're good on that front.
So, Wilson Avenue, is it a private? Sidewalk that goes down the middle of that Wilson Avenue, that's a private sidewalk then too, right? That goes with that house, right? Or is that part of-
That, that strip was part of the Creekside subdivision. It was owned by the, well, by the developer and then the homeowners association, who I believe sold it to the adjacent property owner, who has Restoration Cottage next door on the opposite side. And I think that the city, when, let's see, as the subdivision was, was winding down and there was the question of whether the homeowners association needed to maintain ownership of that parcel, I believe the city agreed that provided the sidewalk remained, the pedestrian connection remains out to East Baltimore Street, that we didn't care who owned it as long as that pedestrian connection stayed.
That's right in the middle of his driveway, though, isn't it?
Yeah. Can we get that fixed?
Yeah.
I mean, it's just in the wrong place, I mean, I don't-
It's in his driveway.
I mean, that's-
Right, yeah.
Well, that, that was, that's more of a Creekside issue. You know, that was built with the subdivision, when the subdivision couldn't get vehicular access off of Baltimore Street as they originally intended.
So is it a town sidewalk, or is it a private?
It's private, but it's required by their public works agreement to have gone in. So the city required that pedestrian connectivity for the community, and it ended up there because there was no, and, and again, we get into, you know, this issue when we, when we design things that are intended to be privately owned and not city-owned. And with Wentz Chevrolet, CVS, and Food Lion, that was supposed to be a private street, or those were supposed to be private streets. And then when Creekside couldn't access East Baltimore Street, the, they proposed accessing the community by Break Iron Street, which was at the time private. So basically, the city ended up accepting the private streets that did not have sidewalks built according to city specs because they were gonna be private. You know where it's all going. So there wasn't a reasonable way to construct sidewalk along Break Iron Street to tie the community into the sidewalk network that way. So the developer of Creekside was required to build the sidewalk down the thirty-foot easement that they, sorry, a thirty-foot strip of ground that they owned, and to construct sidewalk from that point along East Baltimore Street connect, to connect down to the CVS store where the sidewalk ended. So that was the way that we connected the Creekside community to the rest of town with the sidewalk network. So that's why the sidewalk's there.
Well, I think, yeah, so I'm tracking how we got there, but can we fix it?
So, yeah, and, and at the time, the property next door was, was vacant, the driveway that had been there was all overgrown, there was really little evidence of a driveway there.
I don't think there was much discussion-
And the Creekside community did not, as, as was in Andrew's report for both, both, well, all three projects before you, about the developer providing assurance that there are no enforceable deed restrictions or encumbrances on the properties. Well, what happened with this property with Creekside is an example of that gone wrong. The developer, while they conveyed that everything, they had clear title to everything, the adjacent property actually had deeded access across that property. And that's, we found out about that well after the fact, and so the developer ended up creating a new driveway entrance onto one forty, and-
That's Wilson.
That was after-
Wilson Avenue.
-sidewalk was in. So it's really no longer Wilson Avenue. The properties that were addressed for Wilson Avenue have been readdressed for either Amicus Street or Break Iron Street. So Wilson Avenue really is a historic notion now, but it still shows on some drawings as Wilson Avenue.
Right.
So it's basically a driveway.
So it's, right, so it's a driveway.
A driveway with a sidewalk going down the middle of it, and how's that connect to Taco Bell's sidewalk coming across one-
It doesn't, it's totally unrelated.
I think that's gonna be another discussion.
Yeah.
As on New Taco Bell.
And, and there's, as long as that sidewalk, or a sidewalk, remains, that property owner can move it to whatever, as long as he or she maintains the connection. So if they think the driveway should be on the other side, they can put the driveway on the other side, as long as that sidewalk connection remains. And I don't think the city would stop them from doing that. We just want the sidewalk to be there.
And logically, you're not gonna go, you're not gonna pass up the entrance, that you'd have to walk past an entrance to then go down the, the sidewalk in the middle of nowhere on Wilson Avenue, to then come around, do a U-turn, and go back to the front of the store. Unless you're trying to get your steps in, that's not gonna be a viable way. People are just gonna take the sidewalk that now exists in the back.
According to the drawings, though, it's connected.
Yep.
Yes.
As long as the end result is connected.
Yes, yes.
Regardless of where it's located.
Yes.
All agreed on that?
I agree it's connected.
I agree, yes.
Not exist.
Nothing.
Does not exist, yet, in what you panned out here, you show Wilson Avenue on the right-hand side of the lot. Is that a separate Wilson driveway?
Wait, I'm sorry.
Yeah, on the soil resort report.
The soil report you said?
Actually, it's right across from the entrance going into the shopping center. You show, you show, you show Wilson Avenue again. So is that-
Hey, gee, one.
Well, I mean, technically, it shows it right there on there, but it, like, it's a gravel path.
We can, we can remove the reference to Wilson Avenue.
Right, it shouldn't be there as-
Yeah, and, yeah.
Unless that's planned to be in, it's in-
No, and, um-
N H D.
Okay, and, yeah, if, as part of the survey and ALTA, sort of like in the staff report, we, we analyze all existing deeds, covenances, right-of-ways, whether, I guess, existing or historical. So, kind of like Jim said, it could be more of a historical reference at this point, but we can always remove that if it causes any confusion, now that we know that it's just a private lot.
And, and again, this is the adjacent property and not the property that we're talking about for Taco Bell.
Right, it's Lot Two, that's, yeah.
Right, so whatever, whatever we, they can, they can change the call-out if, if need be, so that it doesn't reference Wilson Avenue.
Back to Taco Bell, I'm just wondering if we, the traffic off East Baltimore shouldn't be one-way instead of two-way.
So, that's, and I'll, just real quick, tonight we have Kevin Savage from, who did the traffic study. There were questions last, last month, there were a lot more questions about traffic than we typically have at the concept level. So even though we're still waiting for some state highway comments, Kevin joined us tonight so he can speak to the, the study, so.
And I can kind of go through a quick overview of that, you know, is, is good?
I was gonna say, we just got it tonight.
Yeah, we just got it, so, help us.
So we prepared a traffic, transportation impact study that Jim has mentioned was submitted to State Highway. We're expecting comments probably in about a month. So just to kind of highlight, you know, what we looked at as part of that study, first thing we do is, is we take traffic counts on the existing roadway network. So as part of the study, we looked at the intersection just to the east of here with the East Baltimore Street and the Tonny Town Shopping Center driveway, the roundabout further east, and then the signalized intersection immediately to the west. So we kind of, you know, went out to East Baltimore Street and then really went one, you know, major intersection in each direction. So we took traffic counts of those intersections corresponding to the weekday evening and Saturday midday peak hours. Based on S H A traffic volume data, you know, the, the evening peak hour is really, you know, the highest volume on the roadway network in, in this area, at least on, you know, East Baltimore Street. From there, we projected some additional background growth onto those existing volumes to really project the volumes into the future. We added three adjacent developments that were, you know, in various stages of approval based on, you know, county information in the area, to generate what we call, you know, no-bill traffic volumes, really a projection of what the, the traffic volumes will look like, say, two to three years into the future. From there, we surcharge the site-generated trips, and for that, we utilize both the proposed Taco Bell, and we made a conservative assumption to include another fast-food restaurant, twenty-five-hundred square feet on Lot Two. So both of those developments were included in, in the traffic projections, really just to provide, you know, more of a comprehensive study and look at both, both the driveways.
How many trips did you get?
How many trips? Sorry, I'm just getting the correct page reference.
Page three, should be, right?
So there, there's actually a more in-depth table provided on page sixteen.
What was the page number?
Sixteen. So total proposed trip generation for both, both buildings combined is about a hundred and fifty during the weekday evening. That is trips, though, so that's two-way, or, sorry, one-way traffic. If you have a vehicle entering the site, stopping at a restaurant, and leaving the site, that technically counts as two trips. So a hundred and fifty trips corresponds to about seventy-five vehicles during that peak hour. During the Saturday, it's about two hundred and fifty, so again, corresponds to about a hundred and twenty-five vehicles. But what's unique about this use is, according to data collected by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which, you know, essentially is responsible for collecting and collating data for various uses across the country, both these uses have a high pass-by traffic rate, and what that means is, it's traffic that's already on the- And what that means is, it's traffic that's already on the roadway network. It's already passing the site, you know, it simply sees the Taco Bell sign or, or the McDonald's sign or, you know, whatever fast-food restaurant, pops into the site, grabs a meal, and continues back on their journey. So it's not necessarily a new trip that's originating just to travel to the site, it's really already passing by the site. So according to data published by ITE, they identify a 55% pass-by traffic percentage during the weekday evening peak hour. They actually do not publish data during the Saturday peak hour, so we conservatively assumed there was no pass-by traffic. But realistically, based on studies we've, you know, conducted and seen, it's typically in the similar one-third to one-half of, of traffic range on the Saturday as well. But again, to, to provide a conservative assumption, we did not account for any pass-by traffic on Saturdays.
Look at anything regards to what it's going to do to the neighborhood behind there? I mean, the traffic, it's going to generate for them?
So we, we did look at the number of trips that we, you know, would anticipate using that access. Again, because of the high pass-by percentage, we anticipate a majority of the traffic will be focused on Baltimore Street. Say, you know, 90-plus percent of, of traffic will be focused on Baltimore Street. I think, going back to your question about making it, you know, one-way or potentially restricting movements, if that were to happen, I think you would essentially have more traffic utilizing that rear access. Yeah. So especially if that, you know, is in-only, for instance, then everybody's got to go out one-way. So I think they're essentially going to use the rear access to go to, you know, Amicus to head down to the signal at, at Chevron Grand. So I think because there is that full-movement driveway on East Baltimore Street, you know, that's really going to facilitate, hopefully, limiting traffic, you know, as much as possible to the, to the state road.
And who are you working for? Who, who employed you? Taco Bell?
Technically, I was hired by the city.
City? You hired, okay, okay.
I think the big concern coming back on East Baltimore Street will be trying to make a left-hand turn during rush hour.
Well, the other thought I had, came up today, was coming, going eastbound, coming up, CVS, everything's on the left, and somebody wants to go in there to opposing traffic. It's not going to be allowed. So we're going to have a pinch point there, then.
And the same thing happens at McDonald's the other direction.
Right. And, you know, we just got the, as Harry said, we just got this tonight, five minutes before.
That's what I don't like about it.
But, and it, and I addressed it the last time, you know, I'm very concerned as people here that live in that development behind. Jim brought up some points. Very concerned on the traffic because of, I think we all said, are people going to go in off of East Baltimore Street because it's backed up, going to go through to hit Amicus? I said that before, you know, I'm just, I understand, I respect the reports, but it just, I don't know. Without looking at this more, it, it just.
And I, I think from the developer's perspective, they could look at some type of, you know, potential traffic coming within the development to essentially.
I think that's already been addressed.
Discourage, you know, discourage that cut-through traffic. I think the one thing, kind of looking at it from a high level, you know, the driveway off, off East Baltimore Street, there's not really a direct connection to Amicus Street. You know, often developments will have, you know, kind of one centralized access drive. Here, you essentially need to make, you know, you need to come in and then make either a left and a right to get up there, or, or a right and a left. So I think that, in and of itself, does, does discourage a little bit, you know, that cut-through because it's not really the straight, straightforward, you know, access. But I think, you know, placement of, of signage or maybe even a speed hump within the development could potentially, you know, help.
But even if we put, and we are, as a town, we're putting the speed humps in and all that to calm it down, but the, but the traffic is still going to be there. You know what I mean? People are still gonna, that's, you know, and the people that live back there, you know, they're here tonight, and that's, I think they're going to voice their opinion again. And, I don't know, it, I understand, I just, as you can tell, it's, it's a tough one. Because I know what's going to happen.
And then we'll go back to here to hit Roberts Mill. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's, yeah, and.
Well, because currently.
People there can tell you.
Currently, the relief valve is Duvern, which is right after the second-hand-ish place there on the right. So after PNC, the place with everything outside, then Duvern, and that's where.
The right turn only, the right turn only.
Right turn only at, right before, I guess, Long and Foster. That, that's, that's a, that's a relief valve right now for, that's, that's being used by a lot of people to get back into the, into the back of the community.
Are those people using it as a relief valve, people who live back there?
Yeah.
Who would be then going, using that drive anyway? So for example, here, if you're using it as a relief valve, there are people who live back there and would be use, thus using Amicus Drive regardless?
No, because, a lot of it is, is back further, like, I would expect a lot of people to turn on my street on Baumgartner because that's a bigger street, but people might not have the patience for that because the traffic backs up most of the way to the circle. So what you're doing is you're providing a, you're providing another relief valve that, it has been shown that that gets used, that, that the relief valves get used to get off of Baltimore Street as quickly as possible to get back into the, into the developments.
Also, a quick way to get the little standard without going through the square.
So I understand everybody's concern about the traffic and, you know, I, I guess, I'm not, what business do you want to put there that's going to have less traffic? I guess, I'm not sure. So, so I mentioned, you know, coming back on, on East Baltimore Street is going to be a little bit difficult during certain times of the day. But then looking at, when you come out on Amicus Street there, it looks like when you come out and you're looking to your left, that turn is really sharp, and I think it's going to be difficult to see the cars that are coming up from the Food Lion area, so.
Jim, was, wasn't there a study done on that? That, that turn, that quick turn going down the hill at Amicus and Break Iron with the, around the water tower? I thought there was something about line of sight or?
We may have done a speed survey there some time ago because we've gotten, ever, ever since the Creekside community's been developed, we've been getting traffic complaints since, you know, it's, it's, I'm sure we've done a speed survey out there before, so.
Yeah, when you come out the, the rear exit there, it's going to, I just think it's going to be difficult. You can't see very far, and then the road turns, and you're not going to be able to see any cars coming up there. I think that's going to be a, a challenge.
They'll, they'll need to meet site distance requirements for it, so.
But you do have a speed bump there now.
That needs to be bigger.
Yeah, speed tables.
Due to. It looks like it hasn't been painted yet either.
I was going to say, there was, there was a lost-in-translation that happened that's going to be fixed, that, that speed bump was not what was expected.
I'd like to move on, some comments from the public.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, before we do that, do you want to hear any more about the summary of the traffic study? I realize it just was before you tonight, but it's before you tonight so that you could follow along with, with the presentation.
Okay, I'd like to say, I have not yet seen turn a page yet.
But we have, we, we do have the expert here tonight to be able to kind of walk through how that.
I think the only other two points I'm going to make, you know, we obviously compared no-bill traffic without this development to bill traffic with it. We saw really minor changes in delay at these intersections we studied. In terms of the, the specific turning movements from the driveway onto East Baltimore Street, we did see some delay with the, the left turn movement out, but it was pretty similar to the delay observed at the, the adjacent driveway to the shopping center. That shopping center driveway does have, you know, essentially two exit lanes, one left turn, one right turn. SHA, I believe, mentioned at this development that might be considered here as well, essentially to provide, you know, a space for a vehicle to, to wait while they're making that left turn and still allow the right turn to, to exit. So, you know, as I mentioned, the study has been submitted to SHA, we're still awaiting comments. That might be, you know, one of their recommendations. But overall, the, the delay was pretty similar to that adjacent driveway.
So I think you, you said your assumption is a lot of the traffic that's going to be going into the store is already on that street anyway, and they're going to jump in and jump back out. So what is, what was, what did you assume the increase in traffic was going to be because of the store?
So of those numbers I gave you, ITE publishes 55% as pass-by traffic on the weekdays only. They technically do not publish a, a percentage for Saturdays. Based on my personal experience and just, you know, studying fast-food restaurants, we, there is still a very high pass-by percentage on Saturdays, but it's, you know, we assume a little bit lower, about a third to a half. So in the study, we assumed of those 150 trips I me, I mentioned in the weekday evening, we assumed that 45% were new trips, so about, you know, 34 vehicles during that peak hour. And then on Saturday, you know, we essentially assumed no pass-by traffic, so assumed all of it was new, when realistically, that's, that's probably a conservative assumption.
Thank you.
I, sorry, I had one other item I forgot to mention. I know you had, Andrew, you had asked about the number of seats for the restaurant. There are 12 seats on the patio, and then I confirmed with the client that there's around 20 to 22 interior seats. And so that's why you only see the square footage in our parking table as we calculated the requirement based off of the most restrictive, which was the square footage, as that requires 22 parking spaces, whereas the number of seats would only require about like 11. So we met the most restrictive.
Thank you.
Of course.
Yeah, so, non-traffic question. So the rear of the property, can you describe what your intended buffer is going to be for the lights and everything?
Yes, yes, of course. So as the concept is laid out, we're meeting all of the landscape buffer requirements, the setbacks for the drive aisles, the, the parking, the drive-throughs, the sidewalks.
Can you exceed them?
I'm sorry?
Can you exceed them? You meet them all.
So right now, at the rear, we, it's a 20-foot landscape buffer required. We're showing 22.2 feet provided. Within that, we can always more densely screen, so there are planting unit requirements. And as part of that, we can provide, we, our, our client is willing to provide enhanced screening on top of that. So even if there's not a larger width for that buffer, we can provide additional trees and shrubs and such.
I'd be more concerned about the vertical height, not the width.
Yes, yes, of course. So, and, and that's where we will be happy to provide as, as much screening as we can feasibly fit in there. At a minimum, we'll be providing what's required by the town ordinance, and then we can look to provide more beyond that, depending on what, what can fit there. But that's the case for the entire perimeter of the site in all directions, so obviously excluding the, any site triangles at driveway entrances.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, there's a, a light study that gets done, right?
Yes, yes, there will be a photometric plan provided as well.
That's why I said, it's getting, going to get done.
Yes, yes. So then, at the, the next step, you'll, you'll see the photometric plan as well as the landscape plan.
I'd like to open up to anyone from the public that would like to come forward and make any comments. Take somebody in the back.
And just a reminder to please sign in.
Yeah. Get your name, address, and sign in, please.
My name's Karen Cessna, and I live at 21 Amica Street. And just a few comments about the, I, I forget exactly the word you used about cutting through on Duvern, a relief traffic. We have plenty of traffic coming through Amica Street during rush hour times from developments behind Amicus off of Roberts Mill and way back there, lots of developments. And that's why we asked for those speed bumps, which are like, not too much of a bump, but anyways.
I called them speed suggestions when I, when I went out and looked at them.
Oh, yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm on your side on that one.
If it was supposed to be a speed bump, they should have taken a minute more and done the thing right. Anyways, so as far as people accessing Amica Street with this, with this situation on East Baltimore Street, if you're on East Baltimore Street in rush hour, good luck with getting to this Taco Bell. If you're right there, you can turn right. And if you're trying to come out of there and turn left, well, you know, wait till 5:30, quarter to six, because that's when the traffic's going to slow down. So I don't, I don't know if anybody's been there at that time, but in and out. And then, if they can't turn there, they can use the light at Chevron, come on around to Break Iron, and back to Amicus, and in the back way, and then back on out. So I think we're going to get a lot more traffic on Amicus, which is, and, and the way it's situated, where it comes out on Amicus, if you're coming out of this center, and you make a left, and then you have to make an immediate right. If you're an automobile, that's one story. May I ask this panel, what kind of trucks deliver to your Taco Bell? Are we talking about a pickup truck? Are we talking about a box truck? Are we talking about a tractor-trailer?
Typically, a box truck or a tractor-trailer, but we do truck turn analysis as part of the site layout.
Well, I, I'd like to know how you manage this tractor-trailer coming out of here, making this left on Amicus. And then about the time he gets the back end of his trailer out of there, he's got to make himself come around to a right on Break Iron.
I know they haven't run the templates yet, but a tractor-trailer would essentially need to enter and exit off of Baltimore Street. It wouldn't make that turn.
Yeah.
And how are they going to get back out of there? Back out the Baltimore Street?
So even during a, even during just phase one of the project before Lot Two is developed, and we, we run into this with fire access as well, where if there's a dead end, or, for example, if you weren't able to make the Amicus Street, this drive up here is essentially utilized as a T-turnaround, so a tractor-trailer could come into the site off of East Baltimore, utilize up here as a T-turnaround, and then come back out to East Baltimore.
Well, I don't know about sizes of vehicles and all that, but that looks a little tricky to me. But in any case, if they're coming out here on Amica Street, they're going to have to take up the entire property of Amica Street, and then they're going to be headed around and then have to make another real quick turn, so anyways. So if they're, if they're tractor-trailers, I don't know about that one. So that's all I have to say. Oh, and I did want to mention that when I was here at the last meeting, and I mentioned the people coming down Break Iron, and the, the intersection with CVS and Food Lion, they have installed stop signs there now.
Yep.
I thank you very much. They are marvelous. I mean, it does slow down the traffic there, and especially these people coming up Break Iron and then making a quick left into the Food Lion without noticing anything else.
We, we were out there looking at things the day after the meeting.
Thanks for the stop signs. Thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, just one thing, just, just one, one thought. The truck, or the deliveries are non-business hours?
Non, non-business hours, yes.
Okay, okay.
And they're, they're directed on how they're supposed to enter and leave, right? Isn't that what you said last month?
That they, they can do that, yes, if there's, if there's major concern. Obviously, the client has no ultimate control over how a truck driver follows rules, but they can set delivery methods in place.
Sir, you got the floor?
Hello, I'm Donald Levisay, I'm at 18 Amicus. I signed in already. Question for the traffic study. Did you take into account the traffic that comes from Stumptown, Roberts Mill, comes through Creekside, goes to the stores, and then cuts back through Creekside and goes back out Stumptown?
We did not specifically analyze that, no.
Because there's a lot of traffic that does that. Speed bumps. Thank you for putting them in. If they're going to stay the way they are, you should have saved your money. It was nice when they milled it to do the work, traffic slowed down. Traffic slowed down.
Maybe.
Now it's back to normal. And honestly, with these types of speed bumps, even myself, I find myself wanting to actually speed up to go over them, not slow down.
Yeah, we are working to address that. It was, like I said, there was a, something got lost in translation, so now we're working to address that.
Okay. Thank you. I also wanted to, again, reiterate, thanks for the stop signs. Does help at Food Lion. One thing I did want to reiterate too, traffic coming in off of East Baltimore Street. You mentioned that relief, I can't think of the street name.
Uh, Deverne.
Deverne, okay.
Yeah.
I do exactly what you're talking about. There's a lot of traffic that still backs up, especially at the light at Chevron, cuts into Chevron, comes back through Creekside to get back to those back developments, because they don't want to wait for the lights, especially during rush hour. An entrance off of Baltimore Street to Taco Bell with a back exit into Amicus, people are going to be doing the same thing through Taco Bell in these lots as well. So I'm going to straight up, if there's any way to close the entrance on the Amicus, please do so. It's the only way you're going to prevent people from cutting through there. Yeah, it's right at the water tower.
Coming out.
Yeah, yeah.
And people will not, even if they don't necessarily come back out to East Baltimore, they will cut through and then cut through Creekside, get back to Roberts Mill, Stumptown, and cut that way. Because people are, like I said, people are already passing on the right, making that right to get, to get back through there. Yeah, so those are the big concerns I had. I do know there was a concern as well as lighting. Is there any plans to address lighting coming back into Creekside?
So there will be a photometric study done. It has not been done at this time at the concept level, but it will be done as part of the preliminary final site plan stage, and illumination off of the property, both onto adjacent properties as well as onto the right of Y are analyzed as part of that study.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Stop sign there, they'll put a speed bump in there. Even though they stop, people do run. Speed bump there would slow traffic down a lot and maybe discourage. Anything that discourages.
Good evening. My name is Pamela Peoples, and I live at 28 Amicus Street. I'm an original owner. I've been there since the beginning. I've seen how the traffic has changed, and that's my issue, the traffic. Originally, when I got there, and you said there wasn't hardly any traffic at all, people were just going through. With the new developments coming, the people are coming through Stumptown, flying through there. And then when you try to make that turn right up there by the water tower, it's hard. So you have people coming through, and that's why I'm thinking with a Taco Bell there, it's going to be difficult, because they're already trying to make that turn and people coming that way. When you put in the speed bumps, I live at 28, that speed bump is right there by 30, I want to say. I sat there and I watched. When it first, when you first did it, and you had those deep, I sat there and watched people just stopping and slowing down. Oh, I loved it. It was great. And I back into my driveway, so, you know, previously, I couldn't back into my driveway, because so many cars come down, I have to sit and wait until it clears so I can back in, and I get home around 3:30. So when this happened, it was great. I'm sitting there and I'm flying. They fixed it. They put the tar over it. And now it looks like it's just a Speedway. It's like people are having fun flying through. I sat there for a half an hour, people just flying through it. They don't stop. So if you're going to have a Taco Bell there, and you already have traffic coming through, it's going to be an issue. My other concern, like they said about the stop signs, great idea, because people are coming out of the CVS from back, and we only had that stop sign right there at the Food Lion. So it was great. I just experienced it last week, I mean, a couple of days ago, and it was fine. However, when you're going to have tractor-trailers coming through there, and it's just going to back the traffic up, because now you have people stopping there trying to get through. The other issue is coming off of Baltimore Street. If you're going to come off Baltimore Street and make that right there at the CVS, and then come through, you already have, I mean, in the morning when I come through, you have the tractor-trailer from Food Lion trying to get down there, it's just going to back the traffic up. I love my community. I overhear people having issues with it. And I don't have any issue with Taco Bell. I just wish that they were located at a different place, which would make the residents more happy. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Becky Mendenhall. I live at 5 Amicus Street. I was here at last month's meeting as well. I was hoping that tonight, the operating hours were going to be discussed, but I haven't heard that mentioned.
Yes, so we did confirm with the client, it will be 24/7, but they, there are limited hours for dine-in seating, and then there's, there can always, different stores operate at different hours, so it start, usually starts there, but with town and community feedback, there could always be adjustments. It's not set in stone. That's just where they start.
So the drive-through will be 24 hours, but the dine-in will not be? Is that what you said?
Typically, they close the dining room after a certain hour, but like I said, it's always a conversation in the beginning, so.
That sounds like an absolute nightmare and not fit for bordering a community at all. Does the buffer that was mentioned to the adjacent property, which is our property, does that 22 feet of access include the proposed drive, or is that beyond the drive?
That's just of green space, so it does not include the drive.
So it would be on the opposite side of the drive?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
It would be on your side of the drive.
Right. Yes, so there will be 22 feet of landscaping between the, any.
The drive.
The drive.
And the property.
Yes, correct.
I can tell you that just, if that access road moves forward, which I'm hoping it does not, that just a natural barrier would not be sufficient, just some trees would not be sufficient to deflect the sound, light, and traffic to mitigate that for certain. I was listening at the beginning, and I noticed it was spoken, the address of the proposed Taco Bell, it's 529 East Baltimore Street. But as I'm listening to all the conversation tonight, it sounds like it's an Amicus Street business. And I want to emphasize that Baltimore Street is commercial, Amicus Street is residential. No one in our community has any desire for our residential street to become a commercial street, which is exactly what it will become if that access drive is allowed to move forward, especially in the location that it's proposed. In addition, a lot has been said about the traffic, which is absolutely a problem. Even more so, though, are safety concerns that all of that brings, especially at the curve where it is a blind drive. I can tell you, my house is right across from it practically. It is, I can't even imagine what kind of nightmare scenarios we're looking at, not only with vehicles, but pedestrians, if that is permitted to move forward. With the curve there, as well as the traffic cutting through from 140, a couple of turning rights and lefts through a parking lot is not going to deter people from cutting right through there both ways, all the time. If you're familiar with the neighborhood, we have Creekside, and then behind it, if you turn left and then right, there's a, there's the community there, and then there are all the communities beyond it, and all the way back to Mead's Crossing, all of those people are cutting through our community to come forward and come up to the shopping center as it is. Those little left and right turns are not going to deflect the traffic from people cutting through the neighborhood. I also wanted to mention, you can't compare the traffic situation on the Chevron Drive side of 140 to the opposite side where the library and Kenny's are. It cannot be compared. For one thing, if you're on that side, you can go all the way back to Trevannion. There is a road that goes all the way back, which is sufficient to mitigate some of the traffic. People can continue to go down that way. You also have the drive that goes by Kenny's that goes all the way down. There is nothing like that on the other side of Chevron. It is the Food Lion parking lot and the car dealership. There is no throughway. It is all going to have to bottleneck there and go out. If that access road is permitted to move forward, that is what's going to happen there. So in addition to the traffic and the safety, I also know that those of us who live in that community are entitled by law to peaceful inhabitants of our homes, which currently we are able to have in some regard with the current traffic issues. I don't see that as even being within the realm of possibility if we have this access road. Now, I understand that the property facing East Baltimore Street is commercial and can be developed commercially, fine, but this access road, I would respectfully ask, please, please carefully consider and do not allow to move forward if, at all possible, if there is, for some reason, some legal obstacle that would prevent the commission from stopping it, I would say the only acceptable solution would be to extend straight break iron, not come around the curve and have some additional street. The only thing that I could see that could even be potentially safe, do you know what I'm saying? You come on Chevron, and then there's break iron, and then break iron curves into Amicus. The only thing that I could conceive is even potentially, it's still going to be a nightmare, still a nightmare, but if there were some legal obstacle that would say, oh, well, we can't stop this, then the only thing I could see that would make any bit of sense would be to just extend straight. So you would not come around a curve and then have another road from that way. But again, that would be not what we want at all. No one desires to have our neighborhood become a commercial development. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, that was my wife. I'm Ram Mendenhall. I live, of course, at 5 Amicus Street. What does that do to our property value? Well, now, we had this nice big green grass area in front of her. Now, we actually, it's commercial, and Taco Bell is coming up pretty much right outside our laundry room door. Bam, there's the parking lot. I was here the night they were talking about signage, and that Amicus Street entrance has a sign, lit-up sign right there, so that's going to be bright and basically shining to have. And I just learned this is 24/7 drive-through, so the lighting of the cars going by and all the time, all the headlights, it's going to be constant, and we're going to see lights going by our windows all the time. So that was just my thing. And yes, people are going to cut through Taco Bell to get to Amicus, to get to Stumptown, and other roads. That's going to happen. That's going to create a problem. And so the lighting in the parking lot, I guess you're going to have post lamps or something like that. Do they stay on all night, I guess, since Taco Bell's 24/7? So that only doesn't affect 5 Amicus Street, but what about 2 and 4 Amicus Street that are kind of close by as well? So just all I needed to say. All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Chris Farley. I live at 128 Water Run. Just, I'm not going to touch on everything they already did, just two points real quick. Thank you all for all your work with the speed bumps and the stop signs. Very much appreciated. Second, as far as them talking, cutting through, the city already had to put a fence, actually, on that corner for people cutting through the gravel lot already, driving up what I guess was presumably Wilson Avenue. They got impatient, they would drive literally up the sidewalk through the neighborhood, and that's before, like, this ever took place, right? Like, they're already doing it to the point where you already had to put a fence to try stopping it. And the only second point I would like to make is, there actually is a commercial vehicle restriction on Amicus. I think it's maybe 10,000, 15,000 pounds. I don't know. Would that be addressed as well? So that's it. So thank you all for your time.
Questions for the commission?
I will, just one item to note on the signage. The light that's, or, sorry, the sign that's proposed at the rear of the site is going to be non-illuminated. So that is, I just wanted to note that, so the side of the building with the sign that faces the residence, it will not be illuminated.
Or a motion. You indicated there are some changes made to those speed tables that there now. What changes could be made? I actually went out of them two, and I crossed one, didn't realize it.
Exactly.
So what changes are being made? Just to help.
The plan was to have them be the same as the ones that are on Westview, if you go and try those. Again, something got lost in translation. I don't have all of the details as to who, what, where, and why, but I know we're aware of it and looking to get it fixed.
Option for a motion.
What motion are you looking for? Approval? Is there any thought to closing that off instead of having to go straight through to Amicus? Here with the commission, I'm talking, but anybody?
Any thoughts on that, not having that drive-through on?
Um, I don't have any feedback at this time. It's something we can look into, but I, I would have to consult with the client, and I will add, Taco Bell is going to be leasing the property. They do not own this property. The landlord will be the one who's ultimately developing Lot Two, so some of these phased improvements, such as the road, are also part of the landlord's piece of the puzzle. So, a few cooks in the kitchen here.
How would the traffic from Lot Two back out to 140? Right-hand side of property two?
So they do, they do connect here.
They connect it in the back, yeah. But back here to the rear of Lot Two.
They connect in the front as well.
One entrance, but both, but right now, it's, we're only talking about Taco Bell.
Correct.
But the one to the right, if you're looking down, to the one to the right, it's still going to use that in and out off of East Baltimore Street.
Correct.
And that's what they did the traffic study on.
I was going to say, as Kevin noted, that 2,500.
Yeah.
Yes, that wasn't incorporated in the traffic study.
I'm torn with the, I think there needs to be some kind of exit out the rear, mainly for fire engines and stuff, but I'd be okay if it was, like, closed off and able to be opened up for the, in the event of an emergency.
Good idea. I like that.
Yeah, I would have to rerun the, like, truck circulations as well before I can confirm to any, closing off any of the exits.
And I'm also really torn, because I know everybody wants more restaurants in town, and so... town. And so here's an opportunity and, you know, it's just, if, if it's next door to your house, nobody wants it.
Thing is, you can't, you're, you're 15 years late.
I'm so sorry.
Have development behind you. Amy had something else? Come to, please come up front.
Again, my name is Becky Menenhall, 5 Amicus Street. I meant to include this but didn't when we were talking about considerations for all of this. The business that existed previously managed fine with traffic on and off of East Baltimore Street because that's its design. That's where the traffic should be going on and off. So to me, that says any business that cannot exist with traffic just going on and off 140 is not fit for that site. Respectfully. Thank you.
I think just from a, a traffic perspective, just looking at a high level, I think some type of access to Amicus, whether it's, you know, emergency only or potentially restricted, would probably be necessary. I know that existing business does have a, a really wide curb cut. It's, I mean, essentially not a curb cut. It's basically just, you know, wide entrance. So if there ever were, you know, an accident or something that were to occur within their access, they obviously would have another means to get around it. With this development here, you know, if, if something were to occur at the main access on, on Baltimore Street, you know, I think there would need to be some type of alternative or at least emergency access and, you know, in, in case that were to happen.
Ron Menenhall, again, 5 Amicus Street. There was talk of a building like some type of evergreen or something like fence line, like a natural fence line between our property and the Taco Bell itself. That would be great. Part of the property that they're leasing is woods. And if, I heard that they're knocking that all down to the cornfields. And that does create, we do have deer back there, groundhogs and other animals like that and stuff. And unfortunately, there's mice there that we do get in our house. We have a contract with a pest control company that helps with that. But they're knocking part of the woods down. So that's less woodage in Tony Town. They'll be knocking that all down. But part of the fence line is, fence line, natural fence line isn't going to stop people cutting through there. And there's already people that kind of cut through our property to get to the woods. And part of that woods is our property that goes to the cornfield. It just not developed its woods. And we like it that way. So would it be something of like they build a wall? So where it's like they, they can't walk through a wall, but they can walk through evergreens or some other type of, of, type of a natural fence line and stuff like that. I just wanted to mention those two things. Thank you.
Just wanted to ask a point of clarity. Chris Miller, 107A Trevanian Road. When we were talking about the truck deliveries earlier, I thought it was mentioned that Taco Bell, the trucks would be coming when they're closed. With it being 24/7, that can't be the case. So I guess my question would be, when are the truck deliveries?
So it wouldn't be as close per se?
It's just going to be off hours?
It's off hours.
Okay, just, just checking on that. Are your off hours like 5, 6 a.m.? Because that's what we've seen typically from other, like Dunkin' Donuts, Food Lion. We see those trucks come in 5, 6 a.m. We already have complaints on, on the residential level or surrounding those properties for noise complaints. So that's just something to take into consideration of when they're actually going to have those trucks. And again, the committee might even want to hear when those specific timelines or timeframes are going to be in the future. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you.
Donald Levissi, again, 18 Amicus. I do have a question for the traffic study. I don't remember where it is, is on the blueprint, but the entrance to McDonald's or Gona Bier, Gona Biv, whatever it is, where's that in comparison to this lot? Can the entrance to this lot be conjoined with that? So if traffic controls are needed, it can be put in place or an intersection created?
Which intersection, please?
The-
One with the McDonald's. I believe it's honestly off the-
It's over here.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure it's the next, it's, it's on the, it's across from the Hoffman property.
Okay. Didn't know if any thought had been put into that.
I, I think, you know, an ideal scenario would, but obviously with the property lines, it would be.
If you can see here, I've zoomed in.
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Yep.
Doing the same thing.
As far as like a gated emergency access, I mean, to me, that would make sense provided like police, fire would have a key to it. It wouldn't be something that just the public could just easily drive through.
Our department has hydraulic tools.
Whatever. Thank you.
All right. Let's go back to, see if we get a motion here going.
Is it, is it going to be the same thing as McDonald's? Or we just want to see more before we do the, the plan?
I think we'll discuss closing the road a little bit first.
Closing the road?
Yeah, the back entrance they talked about.
I, I do like what Dan said, for emergency purposes only.
Right, yeah.
Have it that option. As we have heard tonight from the public and, and us ourselves, I mean, there's no easy answer to whatever goes in there. But I think that might be, I'm not sure. It's going to be up to her to go back to her people. But I-
I think I knew that answer.
Yeah, yeah. But at this point, I can't make a motion.
As the commission considers the access point, please also keep in mind that, that does provide the ability for patrons to access 140 at a signalized intersection. So in a way, that is a safety advantage, particularly for left turn movements, you know, in and out of the site. So you would be eliminating that opportunity for patrons of whatever goes there. So just something to, to consider, you know, as well, is the traffic safety for ingress egress.
Going, going back out on East Baltimore, use the, use the back. Is that what you're saying?
Yes. That, that from a, you know, a, a traffic safety standpoint, typically utilizing a signalized intersection can be safer than, you know, just one governed by a stop sign.
You're right about that.
It's a balancing act.
But I think for everyone that would go down and use the light, you have 100 heading the other way.
The other way.
That's my problem.
Right. Well, if that's the case, then what's, what's the problem with the traffic then? So, you know, you can kind of go back and forth on it.
I was just going to say that developer could also look at making that a left out only access. So.
If they would listen to that, then you have a police issue.
You could angle the driveway slightly. You could, you could modify the radius to, to prevent that right out movement. So I mean, that's something that the developer could consider as well.
That almost take care of itself anyway. People's not going to come out and try to make a left.
You mean left turn out of, out of the rear exit?
Yes.
Correct. Yeah, left turn out of the rear exit. So you wouldn't, you, you know, be essentially geometrically restricted from taking a right. But just, just something the developer could look at considering as well.
And we, we would have to consult with the fire department as well.
Have to have another police sitting there also.
I live it every day, so. Ma'am?
Lynn Calley, I live at 20 Amicus. And just to reiterate what he said, if they did, for the safety concern, to force people to go out to the light to make a left, then it should be restricted to left turn only out of Taco Bell. So they wouldn't, don't have the option of turning right to come through the development. And as far as the emergency access, I would definitely support that. But if it's not locked in some way, people are just going to use it anyway, whether it's labeled emergency use only. Thank you.
You, you back to your people.
Yeah. I, given the conceptual nature of, of a concept plan, I would like to request a, a concept approval of the site and then Amicus Drive be explored further at the preliminary or final stage.
Or not.
I, I can't.
I'd prefer not. Come back next month. You've heard the options that was brought out on the floor and here with, with the emergency in and out, the left turn only, walking off period.
Okay.
Back next month or whenever you get an answer.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good with that? All right.
Yes, I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the bumper blocks.
I'm sorry.
See, thank you for the bumper blocks in the sidewalk.
Of course, yes.
And now the great Exodus.
Excuse me?
Said, and now the great Exodus.
Yeah.
Did I miss?
All right. Next item on the agenda, approval of the Falls 2025 amended, amend, yeah, to the 2023 Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan as pertaining to Tony Town.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The county is not here today to present the report, but since I did the report when I was at the county, I think I can fill in. So Mr. Wyprak got in contact with me when I was in the county department of planning. And this, the current service area for these four properties, there are three properties that comprise of Ballinger Park and another property south of the city that will be used partially for the, the Tony Town bypass, proposed Tony Town bypass. Right now, all, the current service area for all four properties are W6 and S6. So that's long range. They are proposing to go to no plan service. Because right now they are in the no plan service area, or sorry, long range, no amendments will need to be made to Table 15 and 32. Table 15 and 32 are the capacity charts for, for all the municipalities in Carroll County and Freedom, Sykesville. So with that being said, no water and sewers being transferred. And you can see on page two and three of the report that those are the proposed maps for Tony Town. And just to mention a little bit more detail, Tony Town Water Service Area Maps are moving four properties from long range to no planned. And on page five and six, those S stat numbers correspond, the State Department of Assessments and Taxation numbers conform to what those properties, the four properties that are being proposed to be trans, moved from long range to no plan. And then the staff recommendation is the city, for, the staff recommends the City of Tony Town Planning and Zoning Commission certify the request to amend the no plan water service area or Maps 18 Tony Town Water Service Area and 27 Tony Town Sewer Service Area as described above is consistent with the 2010 Tony Town Comprehensive Plan.
Questions? I guess we need a motion for, for approval for me to sign this. We can't get it.
Motion?
You've made the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Myers. Other discussion? All those in favor of, in favor of the motion for approval on the 2023 Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan Amendment signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close, nay? Enanas? You've got one on letterhead from your son, right?
I, I will, yes.
All right. Thank you, guys. Ordinance, none? Planning, zoning report? None? I mean, yes?
Yes, I do. So for our planning and zoning report, we've been reviewing the site plans that have came before you today, McDonald's, Taco Bell, Avapco. Also for plan amendments, and Mr. Chair, I mentioned this to you, but I would like to mention this to the entire Planning and Zoning Commission. Tony Town Shopping Center got in touch with us about three weeks, eh, a month to three weeks ago, right when I started. And they would, there has been an issue with lighting from the parking lot up above Kenny's, shining across the Kenny's parking lot into residential properties windows. So we met with the property, well, the, the, the representative of the, or the, or the, the property owner and also Jonathan Bowman, who does the landscaping reviews for the county. And to better, to provide better screening for homes located off of Grand Drive, the bushes they're proposing to remove, so removal of the bushes on the east side of Kenny's supermarket, removing 50 of these bushes, or, or sorry, removing, yes, 50 shrubs, which are maximum of 24 inches in height. So the Planning and Zoning Commission, as part of that plan, that they approved the landscaping plan as well as part of that site plan. And in there, 50 shrubs, 24 inches high, will be removed. Some of them are dying. And what will, what is being proposed is to replace them with six more evergreen trees that will provide a wall of screening, which will be a six foot in height maximum along that raised parking lot. So there's a provision in the code that mentions that a landscape plan, if the zoning administrator and the planning chair concur, and don't quote me on the actual words of that, but that's the gist of, of what it mentions, that that could be done administratively. And I, I don't have a problem with doing that administratively. I feel like that will provide a better screen that's already there than dead, dead bushes. And I just wanted to bring this to the commission, since you all approved that landscape plan many years ago. But I am proposing to have myself approve it and the chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission administratively. And also zoning text amendments, adding commercial uses that are only allowed in 25% of the total lot area in the restricted industrial zone. That went before the mayor and council last month to be introduced. And that will be coming to the Planning and Zoning Commission eventually. And for the comprehensive plan, we are, as you all know, reviewing the current draft plan that was given to all of you last week. And I, somebody I thought had their, I got one. There we go. Their, their binder here. But that is what I have currently for the report. And actually, I guess I can just, well, I'll wait till old business.
First, can I get consensuses on the landscaping for Conaway Co. Shelton Center?
I'm good with it.
Good, good, good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Share it and I'll sign it.
Yes. I'm still awaiting county comments. I haven't gotten those yet.
As far as the comp plan, I got through the first three pages and I really, I really lost it for some reason. So I'm sorry, I didn't get much further than that. So Myers had a question, a concern, and I kind of go along with his thoughts on this.
So I'm sure, I'm sure you're aware of the April 25 update of the, we went from 12, 12 visions to the eight planning principles.
Yeah.
Principles, yeah. So are we going to leave ours, our plan to the old version?
If we're updating, we should at least be updated.
If it was up to me, we're, we're approving this after that's all been done. So it needs to be brought up to current spec.
That was approved from my recollection, this past legislative session. Rebecca Flora proposed that to the, to the governor. That went to the legislature. The legislature approved that. That was this past legislative session in the spring.
Go pass that on to Harold.
I will.
Yes. I mean, it, it's a bad situation to be in. I mean, there was a lot of work that was already done. And it's just, the, the information- it's just, the, the information's probably gonna be very similar. It's just organized different.
Yeah, but it needs to be organized how they want it now.
Right, right. I have to agree.
So if you pass that on, appreciate it?
Yes, sir.
And I did have a question for the, uh, the team here. So, I read their first section there about the vision, and they had some definitions there. But, and we all talked about small town, what it meant to us, and we all agreed that we, that, uh, we, we thought we knew what small town meant. We all agreed on that. But it's not defined in there anywhere. I mean...
That is said, but there's no...
Right, right. But then the one pager is like four or five definitions, but, I mean, it, didn't we come to an agreement on what small town meant? All right, well, that'd be a comment.
In one of our notes that we approved.
I thought it was in one of those, like, sidebar segments. I thought we had agreed on some language there.
I, I only read the first...
That's the first section else before I got here.
Anyway, yeah, we'll look into that.
But in general, I agree that we need to define terms, and we need to define the actual goals, and we need to define where we're, how we're getting to the goals.
But my understanding, I apologize for not being here for the, for the workshop, but what I, what I saw afterwards, that draft that we have, we're gonna discuss at our next...
Correct.
Well, so, so that was the question I had. Do, do I spend all my time reviewing that version? That's gonna now get changed to the eight principles instead of the 12 visions.
Hopefully, it's going to be a finite list of revisions after we're done, 'cause that's just good, I think that's gonna be, well, first of all, I think that's gonna be one of a laundry list that we're probably gonna have, that we're all gonna come up with, uh, of changes and clarifications and everything else in there, as we're reading through it and seeing it all as one, one total document, as opposed to a chapter, a chapter a month.
I definitely wanna read it all as one, one section.
And, and that's, and that's what I'm thinking is, at least my understanding, see if I'm wrong, um, we're all reading it this month, coming back with our notes, and we're just gonna run the whole thing in November. See whose, see whose notes survive. See how, see how many of y'all tell me that my notes are bad, and then, uh, and then we'll go ahead and have that as a final list to hand to them, and then we should, should basically have a change report at that point from Arrow.
But my problem is that, right now, we talk about the 12 visions, and we're gonna change it to the eight principles.
Yeah.
It's gonna, it's gonna read entirely different. So we're gonna do this and just reread all over again.
If I, if I may, I, I think that would only change a couple pages.
Maybe, yeah.
Nice.
Right.
Yeah, 'cause I don't think the book is organized in the 12...
I got to eight and 12, and I stopped. Let me look at that.
Yeah, I don't think the book is organized in the 12 principles.
It is, but it, it is, but I think there's a couple that are just combined. There's two. I think they're all in there.
So what do you, what would you suggest then? Hold off or read it, and then read it again?
I, I believe, I think we should, like Harry said, and all of us, or, and Dan, we should probably read it, knowing that we have some changes coming. But are they gonna be so close? Are they just gonna be segmented differently in, in that? I don't know.
I was gonna say, I'm hoping that there's going to be a defined, like, change log of, this is what we changed on this page, this is how we changed this, this is how we changed that, and that we can then cross-reference and go, okay, let's make sure that that's the way we want it, that's the, the, the...
From and to, from and to.
Okay. Well, so I'll, uh, if, 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 uh, if Andrew tells me there's only a, a few changes, I'll start reading.
I'm, I got the document in front of me right now. Hold on one second. See here.
Is that fast, Andrew?
No, no, no.
I'm impressed.
I got about, a little bit over halfway through it, though. Um, so, they had the, everything was broken down into ten planning categories, land use and smart growth, transportation and mobility, community facilities and infrastructure, environmental sustainability and natural resources, economic development and downtown revitalization, historic and cultural preservation, public safety and community well-being, intergovernmental coordination, housing and community design, and water resource element. And the 12 planning visions are quality of life and sustainability, transportation, housing, economic development, public participation, environmental protection, growth areas, resource conservation, community design, stewardship, implementation, infrastructure.
Okay, so it does, it's not a direct correlation?
No, but it's close.
It's, it's close, but the eight is gonna be...
I think we should read it.
I was, yeah. I, no, that's what I mean. It, it, it's worth reading, because probably those chapters are gonna stay pretty much as they are. They're just gonna apply to the eight principles, as opposed to the 12 virtues and the 16 suggestions.
Oh, and, and by the way, if you, if I would've opened up the page 18, I would see small-town charm. There it is.
Entire page that says, "What does small-town charm mean?" That one?
Like you said, I, I got to eight and 12, and I'm going, what, am I gonna read all this and have to redo it again?
Really, it's not easy reading.
And if I may add, on top of the comprehensive plan update, um, Mackenzie, um, who is the administrative executive assistant, she, um, mailed out all those mailings to the hundred and some-plus property owners in the growth areas. So thank you to Mackenzie for getting all those letters out, and they are currently at the post office getting ready to be distributed to the residents in the, in the, um, in that growth area. Well, not the, um... Oh, what's the term I'm looking for? Not inside the city limits, but inside the...
Yes, the growth area.
Growth area, yes, yes.
Yeah, growth area's the right.
Is that many? 100?
Sir? Yes, sir.
Is that registered mail or just regular mail?
Regular, yep, regular.
Okay.
All right.
Kinda jumped down the list a little bit here.
I got another question for, maybe for Andrew. Um, so, when we go through, we, we have a, a, a general description, then we talk about some goals, but to Harry's point, it's nothing really specific of what we're gonna, what we want to do in the town. So I realize this is supposed to be a guidebook and kinda general, but are we gonna get specific at all, anywhere? I mean, we have, uh, you know, we have the, uh, interviews that we had, all that, all, you know, we had a pretty good response from that. Are we gonna, like, take any information from there and specifically put in that these are actions that we wanna do?
From what I've read so far, uh, so for instance, on page, and for all those different areas, let's see, there's different goals, very broad goals, like on page 29, and then, and this is for transportation, and... Implementation steps. So for instance, for transportation, on page number 32, there's, uh, four goals and different implementation steps.
Anywhere tells us how we measure these steps that we're doing?
I can't think off of the top of my head right now, from what I've read.
I don't think it does, yeah.
That's what we need to add, then, 'cause I...
What was that, Dan?
Way to measure it.
What was that, Dan?
Not a smart goal, specific measurable, yeah. You, you took the class.
And that, and, and that's from just what I've read. I still have a little bit less than half to go, and I'm, I'm scrolling through the document right now, the last several pages. There's implement, like, for instance, I'm just shouting it out here as I go along. I'm scrolling down on page 188, implementation pathway, short-term, medium-term, ongoing. Uh, so they have, "The city may pursue the following steps over time to formalize and strengthen sensitive area protection, amend zoning and subdivision ordinances to adopt expanded stream buffer slope limitations and wetland setbacks, strengthen, um, forest conservation goals by increasing on-site retention or off-site replanting requirements." They have medium-term, one to three years.
I think we get to just...
Yeah, sorry.
Are you retaining everything you just read? 'Cause that, that was where I lost it.
Oh, no, I got it.
You got it, okay.
I, I was gonna say, I, I'm seeing that there's some of that that was in the sections before I got here, but it seemed like by the time I got here, there wasn't a lot of implementation. There was a lot of pie in the sky, so maybe as you get to the other half of the...
Right.
What we did before we got here was the footwork.
Yeah.
I think, I think, maybe you're right. We just need to read through, 'cause we talked in, in the separate chapters all throughout the last couple of months here, so it's kinda, I, I really need to see it all together to, to get the feel.
Exactly, me too.
Okay.
Okay. I'll start reading again.
All right. Based on the time, is there anything on the projects that, uh, you need to bring to our attention this evening? Things moving forward?
Uh, just on Garnet Ridge, kinda some back and forth about their, their sewer pumping station. They were gonna have, they're gonna have a private pumping station in Forest Main, and, um, we've, in C.D. Smith's comment letter, they were directed to basically upgrade things to more of a city specification, and they've kinda come back with, well, if it's gonna be private, why do we need to build it to a city spec? So, we've, I asked them if they could, uh, since CLSI is, is their engineer and is also doing the Mountain Brook project, I asked them to consult with CLSI to see if it appeared that they could achieve gravity sewer flow when the road eventually crosses, um, from Mountain Brook, eventually crosses Flowserve, and they believe that they can get gravity flow from Garnet Ridge through the bypass, um, which would negate the long-term need of the pumping station. So, that's, that's kinda where that one is. It, it's been sort of stuck on the pumping station design, and, um, we, we need to talk internally about whether we wanna give them some latitude with the anticipation that it's not gonna be a permanent station, um, and a permanent Forest Main. So that's kinda the update on that one, but that's the only one I'm aware of.
Flowserve, how we doing Flowserve?
Still back and forth with the developer and the plant manager.
But we're talking, right?
Garnet Ridge, have they changed their development? Did they set the houses back a little bit so the cars wouldn't be on the sidewalk?
No, they're, they're doing it to the way the code tells them to.
Anything we need to talk about here this evening, that we haven't yet?
I, I just wanted to say, I'm, I'm really bummed about the restaurant. I think we've made the right decision, but it's really, uh, it's, I mean, I know people wanna have more places to eat here, so I'm kinda bummed out about it, but, uh, I, I don't think the plan's where, what we needed to see.
I agree. Think to revisit it, I think we're going in the right direction there, instead of just rubber-stamping something.
Yep.
Larger shutdown. That's, that's not on the books.
Will we be able to talk to Jay at our next meeting in regards to McDonald's, or...
I'll, I'll see if he's, uh, I, my intent was to get a memo from him to advise you guys.
Okay, on both, on those.
Well, I don't, I don't know if there's, on McDonald's, yes. Yeah, and, um, I don't really know if there's anything for him to weigh in on for Taco Bell at this point.
No, no, I apologize, no, I was wrong.
Fifty didn't have anything for tonight?
No, no, sir.
'Cause I didn't wanna miss her. All right. Would somebody like to make an, uh, a motion for adjournment?
For adjournment?
Second.
Second by Dan.
Sorry, Harry, did you have something? I, I jumped there. Did you have something?
Um, not particular.
All those who have a motion to say a five percent, aye.
Aye.
O, nay?
Carrie, Bill made it, and Dan seconded.